We are now recording.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, trustees. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the special meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, June 12th. As a reminder to everyone, this meeting is being recorded. Madam Secretary, could we have a roll, please?
Rotten.
Present.
Buena Ventura.
Present.
Chen.
Present.
Disneros.
Here.
Duran.
Present.
Good, not present. No.
Yeah.
Shelby.
Present.
Well.
Present.
Stallings.
Present.
Tony.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our call for public comment. State Bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order that they appear in the attendee pool. If you're participating on Zoom, you've got a function to virtually raise your hand, which is the hand icon at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on that hand icon now, and State Bar staff will call on you in the order that the hands were raised. If you're joining us by telephone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, alerting staff to your desire to address the board. Due to time restrictions, we will limit public comment to three minutes per individual. Our first speaker who signed up ahead of time is Mr. Leonard Steiner. Mr. Steiner, good afternoon. If you are with us, we will activate your mic and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Mr. Steiner, you should be able to address the board now.
Do you hear me?
We do, yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if it's been brought to your attention, but I'm an attorney in California. And I believe that Rule 2.30, and I'm especially interested in Sub B, which basically prohibits inactive members of the State Bar from being mediators or arbitrators in the state of California, except if they're working for a court or a government entity. I think it's just an improper and illegal rule. You may not realize it, but there is no other classification of person in the state of California who cannot act as an arbitrator or mediator, including convicted murderers. If Bernie Medoff and Charles Manson were alive today, they could act as arbitrators or mediators. If Hitler or Stalin were alive today, they could act as arbitrators or mediators. Suspended attorneys can act as arbitrators under the Judicial Council rules. Disbarred attorneys could act as arbitrators under the Judicial Council rules. The only people in the state of California, the only people who cannot act as arbitrators and mediators are inactive members of the State Bar. It just makes no sense whatsoever. I'm prepared to start a lawsuit. I have a client who is a retired member of the State Bar who has had to remain on active status because he is an arbitrator. And it's just unfair and improper. And it makes no sense whatsoever. There can be no rational basis why the only people in the state of California who cannot act as arbitrators or mediators, we're talking about private, again, if they're a governmental entity under subsection B of Rule 2.30, you have the ability to, you are permitted to act. But the only people in the state of California who cannot act as arbitrators or mediators are inactive members of the State Bar. And there's just no possible rational reason why that would be the case. I was hope, I had been in contact with the State Bar attorneys, including Ms. Daftein. She was on an email that I sent, and I've been dealing with other staff members of the State Bar. And I was under the understanding, it would have been discussed at the May 18th meeting, I think you had one. It's not on this meeting. I don't.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Excuse me?
You have thirty seconds remaining.
Well, I've said everything I need to say. I'm just wondering if it's going to be on an upcoming meeting. If it's not, I'm going to start my lawsuit. And I'm hoping not to. I'm hoping that this could be resolved because there's just no rational reason on earth why this rule exists. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner, for sharing your thoughts with us and bringing this to the board's attention. I understand from what you've just said that our general counsel is aware of the issue, and so will await advice from her in a more confidential setting. In the meantime, again, thank you for taking the time to address us this morning, this afternoon. Next up is Benjamin Cone.
Hello, I wanted to address the concern that staff are engaging in some gamesmanship as to what you and the CPE and other bodies see and hear and consider, rather than making their pitches based on the full policy considerations and letting you decide whether to agree with them or not. I'm specifically referring to an email that's come to my attention since I last gave public comment, disclosed under the Public Records Act in November of 2022, in which Donna Hershkovitz instructed the staff who were preparing a presentation that was going to be made to you at your November 2022 meeting to omit certain slides because there was no need to, quote, "take on Cone's comment," quote, "unless asked by the board." It seems from the title of the email, reading the room, that there was some concern that drawing attention to my comments by the board would not be strategic to getting the political opinions and action that State Bar staff wanted to be taken by the board. It's not the first time I've gotten such an email from Ms. Hershkovitz. There was an email in June of 2022 that was disclosed where she had ensured the scheduling of the testing accommodation stakeholder forum was after the Senate Judiciary Committee hearing at that time for that last year's fee bill for the purpose of the adverse public comments she anticipated not coming to the attention of the legislature. I've had to since disclose that email to the legislature. It's becoming a big pattern. I know that your volunteers who are, have other day jobs for the most part, and a lot of your investigatory fact finding comes from staff, which is why, because it's very hard to recreate a lot of that on your own, a lot of that due diligence. But I think it's necessary if there's going to be all this careful cherry picking of information. And I think another example of it was Ms. Dole's behavior at your last board meeting when a lot of the information that had been clarified to her at prior meetings of like the CBE, she still didn't adapt to.
Mr. Cone, thank you for joining us and for sharing your perspective. Madam Secretary, are there other members of the public who've indicated a desire to address the board?
No, there are not.
Okay, with that, then we will close public comment and move on to item 30. This is the chair's report. Just very briefly, I would like to say thank you very much to the trustees who appeared alongside me and Ms. Wilson and Mr. Cardona at the legislature's joint hearing on the State Bar, which happened last month. Trustee Shelby, trustee Tony, trustee Sowell, thank you very much all, trustee Chen as well, for sharing your expertise and your thoughts with the legislature responding to questions. I'm sure we'll talk a little bit more later on in the meeting about that hearing or have the opportunity to do so. Trustee Stallings, thank you for being there in the, in the in the audience for moral support. Ms. Daftein, thank you for your participation as well. And I hope it's just another part of the ongoing conversation that we as trustees are having with our legislative stakeholders. That is all I have to report. We'll move on to item 41. Ms. Wilson, please.
I do not have a report for today.
Okay, that'll take us to the consent agenda, item 50. There are a couple of items on that consent calendar. Does any member of the board wish to either pull an item or ask a question? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Stallings, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Stallings and a second by, I think it was Noel.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have the roll?
Rotten.
Yes.
Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Chen.
Hi.
Narros.
Hi.
Good, not present. No.
Hi.
Shelby.
Hi.
So well.
Hi.
Stallings.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Ten eyes, zero knees. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to item 701, this is a discussion of next steps and potential action related to the 2024 fee bill. This item will be produced by Chief of Programs Donna Hershkovitz, who I'm assuming, well, there she is, being promoted. Good afternoon, Donna. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, the sound cuts out when you get promoted, so if you are ready for me, I'll go ahead and get started.
We are welcome. We are ready for you. Welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. So, as you all know, I certainly don't need to tell you, the State Bar occupies a place of incredible responsibility in this state. And to effectively carry out our public protection mission, which, as you know, includes not just the discipline functions, but admissions and regulation of lawyers, competent ethical practice of law, and support for access to and inclusion in the legal system. To carry out that important mission, the bar needs an appropriate level of funding. For the most part, and with certain exceptions, the important functions that the bar performs are supported entirely by licensing fees, which are assessed on active and inactive attorneys. So today, we're asking the board to at least preliminarily consider the fees that are needed to meet our obligation to staff and to create a reasonable work environment that doesn't rely on a 15% vacancy rate and hiring freezes, the amount that's needed to cover the cost of lease payments for the San Francisco building, reduce the backlog in the discipline system, protect client funds and client trust accounts, and carry out other important obligations consistent with our mission. I would note that the amount that's set forth in the chart in the agenda item that's needed to support core operations, we inadvertently left off the amount that's needed to support the operations of the Jenny Commission. I think Leah has that amount that we can talk about later. And, but I would point the board to that chart to take a look at the, at the funds that are needed in order to carry out the functions of the bar. In addition, today, the board is being asked to advance as a legislative priority the need to secure a statutory amendment that would give the bar flexibility in the use of the proceeds from the sale of the San Francisco building. If all the funding that is required to support the operations of the bar is provided, and the proceeds from the sale could go to replenish the bar's dwindling reserves, which are otherwise set to be depleted by 2025. If all of the additional funding is not provided, some of the proceeds from the sale may be needed to meet our core operational needs. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to trustee Mark Tony to give the board members who are not in attendance a sense of the conversation at the May 23 oversight hearing that was conducted by the Assembly and Senate Judiciary Committees. And also with that context, to begin walking you through the various components of the fee increase that are set forth in this agenda item. Mr. Tony?
Before trustee Tony takes the mic, I did want to offer a very special thanks and highlight his attendance at the joint public hearing. And for that reason, we've asked him to sort of lead the board through this next piece of the discussion. Mark, thank you for being there. Thank you for your expertise, and thank you for the conversation we're about to have, I hope.
Thank you, Chair Duran. I guess I want to start by saying that I think those of us who attended the May 23 Judiciary Oversight hearings on the State Bar thought it was very productive for us to have attended, for us to have, you know, presented some, you know, some of our thoughts, for us as a board and staff to have listened, to have listened to the concerns expressed by the chairs of the Judiciary Committee. And I feel very much that the board has heard the concerns, the need for more accountability, the need to reduce the discipline backlog, the need to focus on making sure that the State Bar conducts its business with the utmost of integrity. And I'm pleased to see the staff address a proposal for us to consider, asking for considering a $98 increase in the State Bar fees, the fees that attorneys pay. And I did want to start with a couple of questions to Ms. Hershkovitz that are clarifying questions. And the first is that, because I heard her, I heard mentioned that the Jenny Commission wasn't included in this, the cost. So I'm curious, what we have in front of us is $98 for essential functions. And I'd just like to know, does that remain 98? Or with the inclusion of the Jenny Commission expenses, is there now another figure we should be looking at today?
Leah, I believe that there is an, excuse me, an additional $5, if I'm correct?
Yeah, the full cost of the Jenny Commission, and this is the operations, you know, sort of going back to the pre-COVID level of operation, would be an additional $5 per licensee. The growth differential between the funding level the board is affording now and what the commission is essentially requesting is a dollar per licensee. So depending on which direction the board wants to go to, you could, you could increase that 98 by between $1 and $5.
What figure would you like us, because it's not on this current, you know, agenda item? Help us out.
I think, I think it would be most sort of fiscally responsible to talk about $1 in addition to all of the other items there, because the base level of funding, essentially the $4, is reflected in the other elements of that funding request. So I would recommend $1.
Okay, that's helpful. I just didn't, I want to be careful that we're not double counting. That's exactly why I was asking. So then I think we're talking, what's on the table is $99. If I could ask one more clarifying question before I open it up to, to the other board members for discussion. And that is, what? I understand that there are currently restrictions on what the State Bar is able to allocate the proceeds from the building sale. I am unclear whether the restrictions are 100%. We can do absolutely nothing, or if there is a very limited amount. So the question is, if there is status quo in the absence of legislative action, what can and can we not do with proceeds of the building sale? I just think that's an important component to our discussion today.
Absolutely. So the statute says that after payment of reasonable costs of acquiring new facilities, which arguably means some, you know, minor tenant improvements, the, that until approved by the legislature by statute, we are permitted to use up to 10% of the net proceeds each fiscal year for improvement to the State Bar's discipline system. The rest would have to be subject to legislative direction.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Hershkovitz. That's very, very useful. So I think we should just open it up to questions, thoughts, ideas, whatever trustees feel like.
Trustee Tony, do you want folks to raise their hand using the chat function, just?
However, is the easiest, yes. Looks like Greg is leaning forward, so I'm going to take that as to Greg would like, has some, would like to weigh in.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. One question first. I'm still stuck on this building stuff. Was, was the restriction, or were the restrictions in place when the building was purchased?
No, there were not.
Well, that gives rise to the discussion that, you know, you're adding rules on after we've made a purchase and we have this item here, and now you're telling us we can't, it's not really our item. You can't really use it. You can use 10%, the rest, the legislature can decide. I'm just wondering if there is any room for maybe discussion, if not some real negotiation around that. But what you are offering is to go to the legislature and get a new statute passed. Is that correct?
Yeah, so our, our suggestion would be to eliminate that restriction. And I think in part that, that our analysis is supported by the fact that we did have the state auditor come in, as you all know, and look at the State Bar's finances and how we spend our money, right? And this was an opportunity for the state auditor to inform the legislature of whether the State Bar was being fiscally responsible. The state auditor did not indicate a concern with how we are spending our money. And so with that, and with the financial condition that we find ourselves in, it seemed appropriate that we would request the legislature lift that limitation and allow us to spend the building in a fiscally responsible way, spend the proceeds of the building in a fiscally responsible way.
And not tell us what that means to them. We don't, don't lay out everything that we have to spend it for.
Exactly.
Thank you, trustee Noel.
No, it's all right. I'll wait. I'll come back around. Arnie.
Yes, yes, trustee Sol. You may be on mute.
Thank you. I too want to come back around for some further comments, but I had a clarifying question. And that is, in the, in the item itself, I was confused by, in the discussion section of the item, in that second paragraph, it says, I think I'm reading the third sentence.
What page, John?
I'm on page three. On page three. And I think I read it, second paragraph, reading the third sentence. "The $98 calculation thus reflects a downwards adjustment of the state auditor's $24 recommended fee increase from '24 to '16 to account for the removal of the portion of that recommended increase slated for reserve stabilization." And I just, I didn't quite understand, I mean, obviously going from 98 to 24, that I just, I didn't, I didn't quite understand why that was considered, you know, down. And I understand that you are, I think you were referring to the structural underfunding that was in the state audit, but, but just, if you just could help, just sort of walk me and maybe some of the other trustees through that, that would be helpful, please.
Okay, I'll do that. So the $24 amount identified by the state auditor included funding to both address the structural deficit and to replenish the State Bar's reserve, the minimum reserve level, about $17 million. So when you break down that $24, $8 of the 24 was for reserve replenishment. Because as outlined in the agenda item, and I think as Donna mentioned when she introduced this item, staff's initial thinking is that we would use the net proceeds, the remaining proceeds from the sale of the building to replenish the reserve. That would suggest that we don't need the full $24 that the auditor identified because $8 of that is for something that we are funding in a different way. So how you see that show up is in that column, Core Operations Support, Address Structural Underfunding, you see $16 instead of 24 because we're taking into account the bar funding its reserves another way. If the board decides that you don't want to go in that direction, we would just reverse that 16 and bring it back to 24. But that's what that's intended to cover, Arnie. So I don't know if that's helpful, but.
It is helpful, absolutely helpful, Leah. I think the thing that I'd go one step further and ask, what's the apples-to-apples comparison in terms of the fee increase? So, because it's not 24 to 98, right? I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, what's that? What's the actual delta, what is the actual delta here?
16 to 98.
16 to 98.
If it's apples-to-apples, where you're eliminating the reserve, you're sort of taking the reserve issue out of the equation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
But you're taking the reserve issue out hoping to use the sale of the building proceeds, which unless, as Donna says, we get a, a change by the legislature, we're not going to be able to use that necessarily, or at 10% a year or something like that.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
And I'll just comment that the issue brought up by both trustees Sol and Noel is implication, or it begs a question. And the question it begs is, should we put back the $8 into this full amount until, because $8 being taken out is conditional. It's conditional on the legislature taking another action, which they have not yet taken. And so I just bring that up as a question that we consider as an option that we're actually looking at the 98 plus the 1 for Jenny, which is 99, plus the 8, which is 107. So I'm not making that proposal now. I'm just trying to grab the ramifications of the discussion.
Trustee Tony, can I, just one more, one more question for me? And that is, at the hearing, and I believe it might have been the, the ethics professor, I do not believe it was the, the LAO. There was an intimation as to if we had gotten fee increases, if our fee increases had followed the, I think, the cost of living, what our, what our current fee would be. And I was trying to look at my notes here just to see if I had jotted that down, and I don't believe that I did. Or at least I don't see it, my notes. Does somebody remember what that figure is?
Yeah, we have calculated the figure. It's different than what you heard because that figure you heard includes all of our fees, not just the licensing fee for sort of attorney discipline that we're talking about today, but it's $663 is what it would be. So if it had just kept pace with pace of inflation, you were something like $800 or $900, but that's including the client security fund fee, the LAP fee. but that's including the client security fund fee, the LAP fee, other fees that are tucked on to our licensing fee. So again, the apples to apples would be what we're charging today versus the the 663.
Gotcha.
Trustee Shelby.
Arnie, in my notes, for some reason, I had 410. I knew I I knew I wrote that down and I had 410 30 years later. With the need to earmark for discipline, that's what I remember from that conversation. But I I remember when the ethics professor threw that out, that number stuck out for me, that 410 stuck out for me. And I guess I would say this, as this conversation ensues, you know, I always believe you ask for you ask for more than what you need because you never get what you want. And so I would imagine a range of, I appreciate how this is laid out, but I think another thing that would be helpful is just understanding if A, B, and C doesn't transpire, like a range of options, right? Like the the ideal option, the mid-level option, and then the, you know, just what is basic, basic operations. I I I love how this table is laid out, but I'm wondering if I wanted a little more clarity as it related to the permanent funding for the CTA piece and 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 is that in any way contingent upon conversations that the state bar needs to have with the banking industry as it relates to what we've I think what the staff has been having conversation around and there hasn't been any sort of finalization? Or is this something that's currently, as it relates to this $19, is this something that's currently being funded and and we're, there's a gap as it relates to, well, I've answered my question on the $7, that's proactive. But the the 12, I guess I was trying to understand, I'll go with my first thought, I guess I was trying to understand that $19 piece. Because it felt like of the recommendations, I know of the recommendations that were made at the hearing, there was really only one that fell squarely in the lap of the state bar. In my impression, after our legislative liaisons meeting that took place, was that we were going to put dollar figures associated with each one of the recommendations. So both committees would have clarity around what this looks like moving forward if those those were to be embraced.
Okay, so I'll I'll take the first part, the 19. This is, oh, as the header tries to suggest, funding to support CTA oversight. So the 12 makes permanent a pilot initiative that was actually recommended by the state auditor. I believe in 2022, you all may remember some discussion about investigation of 100% of client trust account complaints and moving all bank reportable matters to investigations, so not closing them in intake. So that $12 funds this initiative recommended by the state auditor. We were able to scrape together some staff to initiate a pilot, but we do not have the funding to make that permanent. This is obviously a a critical area of interest, I'd say writ large for the legislature, but this particular sort of initiative was not outlined, for example, in that background paper. On the Client Trust Account Protection Program, again, not outlined in the background paper, but I I have heard, I believe, direction from from the board and some discussions we had about preparing a fee increase item, that we needed to fund CTAP. And so this $7 funds the portions of CTAP that we are not able to do with our existing resources, namely compliance reviews and audits. Is it dependent on the pending request for the banks to report information? I wouldn't say dependent upon, the work will be made much easier and more robust if we get that reporting from the banks. Because then we can do a scan of all licensees, not just those selected for compliance reviews and audits. So with that bank reporting, you will have like the universal ability to look at any discrepancies between what attorneys report, what banks report. With this $7, it's not a a scan of all 200,000 attorneys, it's those selected for compliance review and audit. So hopefully that that clarifies those two pieces. To your broader point, Melanie, I I, yes, we need to do that and and we are preparing that communication back to legislative staff. I I had understood that we were not actually asking for funding to implement all of those recommendations today because we were waiting to see if the legislature came back with an actual proposal. So we are costing out all of those items separately. Some of them are here because there's overlap between what the background paper identified and what I understood to be areas the bar was, the board had already expressed interest in pursuing, like the discipline monitor, the inspector general, diversion programs, transitioning to the state budget process. Those are the areas of overlap that are in the chart. So I don't know if I've just confused things more, but
No, that's helpful. I just, for myself, and maybe I I'm misunderstanding the exercise at the legislative liaisons meeting. I thought in that meeting, we, yes, we were waiting for formal recommendations and and weren't going to. This was a conversation with the larger board around around priorities. And but my understanding was that funding would be laid out for each one of the recommendations because as we clarified as a board, the priorities for conversations that move forward in an official capacity, that there would be clarity in terms of, you know, for recommendation number five, that would require an increase of X for recommendation number six, and maybe I'm just in my non-legal ways, trying to simplify how I would have a conversation.
Okay, I think if other folks have comments, I mean, I I can look back at the work that we've done. I I think it may be that we we have done what you've asked for, Melanie, and that there's actually not much missing here because several of their recommendations didn't actually have there being in the in the background paper, didn't, weren't actually tagged fiscal by us, but I can look into that.
So let me just, if I may, Mark. Let me, let me just say the way that I view the the chart with respect to what Melanie has just said. So the the individual, I mean, just let's just pick the third column and expand diversion opportunities, that's a $6 price tag associated with making that program a reality in response to what legislative staff had recommended, $6 per licensee. It doesn't give, doesn't give what the full amount of budgetary impact that is, but, you know, $6 per licensee is going to be pretty significant, right? Is that what you're talking about, Leah? Was that the the effort to respond? And so, and perhaps Melanie is just saying, in the chart itself, that there's not every it's not, it doesn't address or doesn't list every recommendation by by legislative staff in that report.
Right, because I I'd understood that we weren't actually going to affirmatively pursue some of them now. So it could have just been a miscommunication. Again, I do think we've done the work. So I can likely share that. And we could add to the 98 or now $99 or now $107, I believe, if I get my math right. But this reflects those areas that I thought we intended to pursue at this time. And there is overlap with the recs in the background paper because some of these are board identified priorities already.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I I I do want to, I'd like to clarify something that trustee Shelby said with 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 my own thinking. I think that we to ask for everything we need. Okay, and we leave it up to the legislature to decide what their response is going to be. You know, I've been taught in I've been taught in fundraising that success is in the asking. Our job is to ask. It's the job of the of the donor, the the authority. It's their job to respond, but they cannot respond unless we ask, unless we ask with clarity, with specificity. And I think we've made a lot of progress from earlier conversations that were with a message was the state bar needs a fee increase with and in a very vague manner to the state bar needs this amount of fee increase to be allocated to this budget list of critical items. I think that's a huge step forward because it gives policy decision makers an ability to look at the list and to make their own priorities. Okay, we don't have the decision-making power as the state bar to decide to raise the fee, but we do have the power to ask for what we need. That's my thinking. I'm happy if there are other views, if if people think differently or have experience that suggest you know, that 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 suggests a different approach to this. That's why we're all here together to have a discussion. Yes, I'm going to go to trustee Broden, then I'm going to go to Ms. Hurskabitz.
Thank you. Couple of questions. If we're asking for $99, why is the, we're asked to authorize staff to advocate up to $99? And the other thing that I I'm wondering is what is the proportionate increase to inactives? What what is that number and how does that impact the the overall amount of money that we'd be raising? And the last thing that I would ask is, what is $99? What is that a percentage increase for the attorney? I can't recall, you know, what I pay each year because I have so many different things that are added on there, right? Volunteer for this and that and the other. So I'm just wondering, what is the percentage of the base fee for the attorney? That's being asked to increase. And the last thing I would ask is, are there other increases that are coming in? For example, for legal specialization and various things like that, are there other increases that we're also asking for?
Great questions.
I'll take the resolutions first. So the thought is, I think there's a resolution to delegate, to give staff the authority and then to delegate potentially to the board chair and vice chair the ability to settle on the final amount. Because the idea is it is an iterative process, it's a conversation. Along the way, we may get feedback that changes something. And so to have some flexibility in what we're pursuing between now and getting this wrapped up would be helpful. The board may decide you don't want to grant any flexibility and whatever you decide today is what we're sticking with no matter what. But the idea is that there'd be some flexibility, so that's the intention behind the resolutions. On the inactives, I don't believe that we worked out the dollar amounts market's proportional to the actives, and I can't quite remember what that is. The total amount to be raised by this is included in the dollar amount that's in the fiscal section of this board item. So I I don't have those calculations in front of me and I don't actually know if our Sully is here. Finance did great work on that, but I don't have the the numbers here for you to give you the inactive. Other fees, the fee increases that have been contemplated have come before the board. In the general, on the general fund side, those are the LLP, law court fee increases that were already approved. Fees for certificates of standing, fees for MCLE, sort of wanting to get additional things, sort of get credit for them as part of your MCLE compliance. So all of those fee increases have already been approved by the board. Legal SPAC fees are not up for consideration this year. That doesn't mean they're not going to, you know, come to the board for an increase at some point. You will, of course, be receiving a package on a lot of other admissions fees at your meeting in in July or September.
Questions get answered, get a few of them, so please.
Yes, I'm just wondering, what is the percentage of increase that this $99 represents?
The base fee right now is 390, the apples to apples fee. So 390 by another $100, about 25%.
Thank you. I think Ms. Hurskabitz was up next.
So I did go through, in response to trustee Shelby, went back through the list when we were comparing everything that was in, included among the suggestions from the the possible suggestions from the Assembly and Senate Judiciary Committee in the background paper that was prepared for the hearing. The items that did have a dollar figure attached to them are the items that are in this chart. For example, the diversion program, creating an inspector general. Now, obviously, the legislature could say, well, we want, you know, what tax described for us, the diversion program that that you're envisioning that requires the $6 increase because we may be envisioning something else. And so there's obviously room for negotiation there. But in general, the things that required a a fee increase are included here, things about, you know, the constitution of what the what the board would look like or or the whether the state bar is designated as a public corporation in the state constitution. Things like that did not have a dollar figure attached to them.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Chair Duran.
Thanks. Is there a, is there a rule of thumb that we could go by that every X number of dollars represents a new full-time equivalent employee?
Yeah, we usually use about like between 150,000 and 200,000, if you if you include all the operating and the benefits.
I'm sorry, how would that translate into additional fees into the delta? So is it every $3?
Well, like if you roughly say, again, it's hard because we have the inactives, the inactive fees, about 25% of the active fee, okay? But just for the ease of this conversation, if you say you have about 200,000 slightly less active attorneys, so $1 per attorney is one position, basically, like very rough.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was a good question and a clear response. I want, I want to make sure that everybody gets to weigh in, so I'm going to start calling on people. I'm going to start with Vice Chair Stallings and see if you have any questions or thoughts. Because it this is important to get everybody's views in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think the thing that I keep on coming back to is the, some of the messaging that we've received from the legislature in regards to, you know, rebuilding the public's trust. And this, you know, obviously, we appeared in 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 front of the legislature and really, I believe, put forth a really good case as to the the steps that we've taken to to try and rebuild that trust, you know, thanks to, you know, the excellent testimony of of trustees of our staff. And so I think that that case has definitely been made. I guess what I want to be mindful of is that yeah, yes, you know, if you don't ask, then don't be surprised when you're told no. But you know, I do want to make sure that our ask is commensurate with what we're hearing from the legislature and you know, their very real concerns, but also hopefully that they hear our very real efforts to to right the ship and to continue to rebuild the the public's trust. I'm also mindful that we can't right the ship without adequate resources. And we can't, you know, the state auditor also agrees with that. So I I guess I see, I see both sides of of this issue and as far as what has been produced in the staff memo, as far as what has you know, the dollar amounts, what they're tied to, I think that clearly shows the legislature what we would like to accomplish through, you know, through this. You have these potential fee increases, but I would just not want to say, hey, you know, we can't do this, we don't get the funding. You know, and kind of turn it into a, you know, a gotcha type moment. So I I don't think it would be received as that, I just want to make sure that, you know, that it's not like this is us legitimately coming forward and saying, this is what we've done, here's what we need, here's what we need in order to Here's what we need, here's what we need in order to uh, continue this important reform work. Um, and I, as far as questions, I know there's more of a comment, um, but as far as questions. You know, I am curious how some of the more politically attuned members of the of the Board of Trustees. Um, took some of the comments from the legislature, um, and specific legislators. Um, at the oversight hearing and just what you see. As a path forward, given those specific comments and kind of some of the broad themes that were talked about. So I don't know, trustee Tony, if you're. Comfortable sharing some of your insights. I know trustee Swell, trustee Shelby. Um, you know, you think that uh, ho- hopefully you got kind of a sense of the room. So any, anything that you would wish to add to help further our our discussions today.
Uh, trustee Sol, trustee uh, Chen, you were there, or uh, trustee Shelby? Either of you like to uh, give a response to uh, trustee um. Uh, Stallings question?
Um, I, Highland, were you about to chime in? I know you haven't spoken yet, so I didn't want to.
No, I was just gonna comment that my impression that, I mean, I'm all for asking for this. And I think that Senator Umberg's comments were, even if it's a no this year, it's it's a not right now. Not no forever, but I do think that it's important for us to continue an ongoing dialogue. That was something that came through loud and clear was that this was not going to be just one and done. We appear at this joint oversight hearing and we're done, but. We did talk a lot about continuing to keep open communications and transparency and reporting back on how we're doing. So I, I think we should really consider how we make that happen, so that it's not, you know, six months from now, we're like, oh, no, we haven't. We haven't done anything, and I'm sure the legislators are considering that. That's, that's the thing that came through loud and clear is that I would pair this ask with a. And here's what we're gonna do to continue our ongoing communication.
Thank you very much, trustee Chen, and I I think it, your comments align with those of trustee Stallings. Which has to do with the concept of accountability, that accountability is something that is ongoing. It takes, it's a, it's a practice, it's a regular practice. Um, and it's not just, um, yes, we will, but we have to show it on a regular basis. Um, so I appreciate that. Did you want to add trustee Shelby?
I did, I am, I, I think the other thing that I would add, um. And I'm paraphrasing, I know there was a question at one point in time that was posed during the hearing. Um, articulating if we are, or questioning if we had had asked the Supreme Court um. For any funding or if the Supreme Court had weighed in as it related to any funding. And so one of the things that um, I think is important, and which is why I think this conversation is key, is as. In public comment from um, two of the presenters that were there that day. The ethics professor and even um, Assemblyman Manshine. Um, and you know, in different conversations with his committee, you know, this fee increase in the LAO, I apologize, in the LAO. I mean, this consistent theme about fee increases clear. I just want to make sure that as we are asking for the fee increase. There's a, there's a education and understanding of what is just really dire and important. For the state bar to be able to move forward. And and that's why I I wrote down that number of four twenty one. Because it really stuck out to me, but I think Mr. Broden hit on some pieces. That were really important too, in terms of outside of the, you know, being mindful of our audience, right? We can't balance our, our, our budget on the backs of the licensees and and we're in a unique position. But the, the challenge and the issue is what? There hasn't been an increase since twenty twenty. And so I just want to make sure whatever increases discussed, and and I believe wholeheartedly, we um, without. I believe wholeheartedly there is consensus that a fee increase is needed. Um, I also believe wholeheartedly that we've got to go in asking, asking exactly, clarifying what that need is and that ask is. And um, and making sure that it's core to, and I know that there is no um. I like how this chart is laid out in terms of core operation support, public protection and recommendations. But um, as negotiations go, right, people always want you to prioritize what is critical in your ask. If there is not a position that you're in to get it all. And so I think that level of understanding has to be clear too. Um, and so I hope in the midst of this conversation, we have clarity around, you know, operationally, what must, what do we have to have? And then last but not least, that whole sixteen, twenty four dollar conversation. I would, my preference would be throwing that eight dollars in and letting them tell us no, rather than taking it out. I I mean, if if one oh seven is what we need, I think one oh seven is what we ask for. And they, the legislature through their experience will need to prioritize where they believe if we get there. Or if we get close to there, but I think our responsibility is prioritizing for them. This is mission critical. This is, you know, keeping the lights open, et cetera, so.
Thank you for that clarity, uh, trustee Shelby. I would like to invite trustee uh, Buena Ventura. To weigh in with any questions, thoughts, because I I see him listening very attentively.
Well, first I wanna, um, I I was able to see some of the um, oversight uh, committee meeting. And I want to say that, you know, I I had expressed my concern um, earlier about. Um, how that meeting would go, but I I gotta say, I thought all the members and the staff uh, that were there. Um, did a great job and um, there was clearly to me uh, unity there. There was uh, um, some, uh, what I thought was clearly, um, we're all part of the same team. And very eloquent uh, speakers and uh, stated the positions that. I thought were clear, um, answered some really uh, tough questions. Um, and so I felt really good. I I wish I could have watched more of the meeting. But from where I stood and from an outside observer, just watching without having to ask any questions. Um, I think, I thought you guys all did a good job, so. Um, I think the case has been made, the justification has been made for the resources that we need. And um, I think it has to be bold and aggressive, and I think um, we can't be shy about what we need. To institute some of these uh, changes and reforms. And hopefully we get what we, what we need. We might not get everything, but um, I I fully support it, so. Uh, thank you, Mr. Tony.
Thank you very much. Now I want to, I believe that trustee Sisneros hasn't weighed in yet today. And really would invite him to, please.
Thanks, Mark. Hello, everyone. Uh, no, I I uh, appreciate the conversation and all the work of the trustees and the staff. Um, I'm falling in line with, I think, a number of comments made by other trustees, which is. I think full disclosure of the needs of this organization is important. And um, therefore, this, this proposal and this ask is important to move forward. And as you, as others have said, the folks who can decide these matters will do that. But I think they deserve all the information we've gathered and in order to uh, make that uh. Make those decisions in a fully informed state. So I appreciate the work going on here and support this measure.
What I would like to do, unless there's any objection, is turn this back over to Chair Duran. Because I think we're probably at the point where people may want to start discussing actual proposals here. And I think that's most appropriate under Chair Duran's uh, watch.
Thank you, Mark. I see Donna's hand has gone up.
Just a very brief update. Um, in the nature of um, as trustee Chen talked about, sort of the need for continuing dialogue. Um, we did want to just uh, let everybody know that there were a couple of issues that came up at the hearing. Um, where there was a specific desire for some additional information, talking about the twenty two oh one. Um, matters, talking about the um, Form seven hundred and our conflict of interest issues. And staff did um, very shortly after the hearing, provide follow ups on any of those issues that uh, that required them. Um, and obviously continued to be in communication at staff level. Um, with the uh, with the staff of the judiciary committees, and we just want to make sure to, that that you knew that that, um, that that follow up was done.
Thank you, Donna. You were actually uh, reading my mind, which I was gonna ask that question as we segwayed into. Uh, what Mark is, is I think very, very well set up um, by way of considering the resolutions that staff has prepared before us. Let me just uh, reiterate my thanks, uh, Mark, for the, for the discussion we just had and for everyone who participated in that. And that joint hearing, um, and also to the legislators and their staffs themselves. I mean, it was a very busy day in the Capitol. That was very obvious to all of us, but uh, we did get, I think, a very um, an exceptional amount of time and attention. Um, and the conversation, right? I think all of us there really left feeling like. We are engaging in meaningful dialogue with necessary uh, essential partners and that it was not going to finish. Uh, that afternoon, that indeed we would uh, continue providing information as Donna has just described and. Um, for those of us who have relationships with individuals uh, in the legislature uh, at any level. For us to continue to, you know, represent the, the positions of the, of the agency, uh, the, the commitment to public protection. And all the things that are really going to be necessary to continue to move us forward, um, beyond the next fiscal year for sure. Okay, uh, given that, if there are no other questions on. What Mark has just presented. If I could ask uh, either Leah or Donna to confirm for us, what are the final numbers? I'm, I'm thinking it's a hundred and seven dollars uh, for each of the things that have been mentioned here, but let me just get that from you.
Um, yeah, so as described, it would be a hundred and seven dollars, but I do want to be clear, that is because the um. The eight dollars, the part, the, the uh, proceeds uh, from the, I'm sorry, the uh, amount to replenish the um. Replenish the reserves, um, that's what that eight dollars included. Um, the original, the ninety eight dollar proposal or ninety nine, if you add Jenny. Um, assume that we would be using uh, the sale of the um, the proceeds from the sale of the building. Um, uh, as part of our reserves, as Mr. Tony mentioned, that's somewhat conditional. Um, arguably, that's conditional. Um, and so um, a- and so I just want to make sure that ultimately. We can't double count, right? And so the hundred and seven. Um, it is everything that we would need absent any money from the set of the proceeds of the sale of the building. We know we are going to have money from the sale of the proceeds of the building, so we just need to be very open. Uh, with the legislature in terms of if that is directed in a certain way, then this is what we would need. If it's not, then, um, right, so I just want to be clear with the board uh, about that, that figure. Because I, I want to make sure that we are one hundred percent above board in our discussions and negotiations with one another and with the legislature.
Absolutely, I think that's critical. Uh, Melanie, please go ahead and then Mark Broden.
No, Donna, thank you for that. You know, and the other thing that I think about is, you know, as we go through this exercise of selling the building. There's what we desire and there's what we'll end up with, right? And so there may be even deeper flexibility that is needed. Because through due diligence, we may find that, you know, the target numbers that we are hoping to, to receive from the sale of the building. Are not necessarily what we receive in the end. And so I, I um, I think that is also an important message to communicate as well. Particularly with this real estate market.
Indeed. Uh, Mark Broden and then Greg Knoll, whose hand went up and then down.
I was just wondering, let's say we get our hundred and seven dollar increase. Um, what do we do with the proceeds from the sale of the uh, of Howard Street? Do we have to do anything with that? Do we have to tell legislature? Um, you know, we're gonna spend ten percent on whatever. I I don't know, do we need to say something about that?
Well, if we, if we get the hundred and seven and there's no change to the um, statutory language. Um, I'm not sure that it says we have to tell them, but it does limit how we could use this sale proceeds. And so I think the board would keep that in mind going forward as you develop and approve the budgets. Um, that growth funding for the discipline system, so that money can't be used to supplant, it's just for growth. You know, we would sort of have a plan, I think, for using that going forward, potentially to lower caseloads and O C T C. Other kinds of investments that the board might decide to make.
Well, maybe that's a, a good thing that we should think about it now in case they ask the question. You know, if we approve that, what are you gonna do with this? We're, we're gonna somehow, we're gonna direct it towards a discipline system to reduce the backlog. That would seem to me to make a good sort of position to take.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, Mark, and and I would imagine that, uh, or I would request that we sort of add some very. Um, some very clear language of our commitment to uh, to achieve that objective. In other words. And staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, I, I haven't seen any um, any written legislative analysis or further. Uh, information coming before either of the committees that indicates whether uh, statutory change that we're requesting is being looked at favorably or not. Is that accurate?
That's right, and since the, um, since the board has not adopted as a legislative priority, we had discussed it conceptual. Conceptually with staff, um, but um, but we haven't pushed it, um, as it hasn't been adopted yet by the board.
Okay, thanks. Uh, trustee Noel, did you, did you still want to speak before?
I took my hand down because trustee Melanie Shelby snatched the words right out of my mouth. I agree with what, with, what she said.
Fair enough, as do I. Uh, trustee So well, please.
I, I'm still in sort of this clarification mode. In the resolution itself, and I know we haven't gotten to the resolution just yet, but uh, in that first resolve clause. Um, and I know this was discussed briefly, I don't understand the interaction between the active fees and the inactive fees. So if we're asking for a hundred and seven dollars and then we'll say there's, there's a proportion, an active fee increase. And then there's a proportionate increase in the inactive license fees, doesn't that all accrue into the same pot? And so should we somehow be asking for less on the active fee side? Because we, it'll be made up in terms of what it is that we're, we're increasing that, that, I think it was thrown out there, that a twenty five percent proportionate increase. In the inactive fee uh, sort of pot, and wouldn't the two of those the, then be additive to what it is that we actually need to try to get to the twenty million? That's referenced in the uh, in the agenda item?
Well, the twenty million is gonna go up, right? Because we're, we're adding in eight, eight doll, we're adding in nine dollars. But what I was trying to say is the figure in the fiscal impact section is inclusive of what we estimate to receive from the inactive fee. I just didn't have the breakdown and what, and I think uh, some, someone pinged me during this meeting. It's about twenty five dollars is the, would be the inactive corollary to the ninety eight dollars. So it's already taken into account in the totals, I just didn't have the fee in front of me, Arnie, so it's not like we're double. We're over charging. So we would, you know, the hundred and seven, it would be about twenty five percent of that is what the inactive fee would be.
Okay.
So maybe like twenty six and a half, twenty seven dollars, something like that instead of twenty five.
Yeah, twenty six point seven five.
Got it. And so. What we are trying to get to is a hundred and seven dollar or the equivalent of a hundred and seven dollars.
Yeah, with the, with the corresponding inactive fee. So I think going forward, we won't do this. It's just we were, you know, time pressured, it seems to be confusing, but yeah, with the corresponding inactive fee, we need that total amount.
Okay. Okay, um. I'm, I'm supportive of this uh, of this item and and I'm, I'm supportive of a number of the comments that have uh, have, have already been made. Uh, in particular comments about uh, the need to begin to socialize and to, and to shop this. You know, I think it's, it's imperative that we think about not only um, the reporting entities um, or the appointing entities. Uh, to the bar, uh, the governor's office, the courts, uh, the legislature in terms of a conversation. But I would also encourage us to uh, to have a conversation potentially with the folks at the Department of Finance, as well as with the L A O. Because uh, there is this, uh, this item that was also raised in the um, in the, the packet for the hearing. As well as, as a ad hoc committee that we've uh, taken on, which is this issue of being a, um, now becoming a part of the state budget process. And the, the overseers of that process are obviously uh, the legislature, uh, the L A. And the the overseers of that process are obviously the legislature, the LAOs involved in that process, the Department of Finance and the Governor's Office are involved in that process. And so I think there's a chronology here, and I wouldn't lead with them. Clearly, this is a discussion that we need to have with the legislature first. But I would not not take the time to try to socialize socialize this with with the the other entities that are that are that need to be need to be a part of this discussion. And then my my only other comment before we get to the the resolution would be I would like to be as finance chair potentially included in the in that second further resolved that both the board authorized the board chair, the vice chair, and then maybe the chair of the finance committee to be engaged in that final sort of fee discussion.
Those are both very good points, Arnie. Thank you. All of that being said and heard, if we could have the resolution up on the screen, I think we will have to offer some red line to it and then see if anybody wants to own it with a motion. Thank you. My screen went blank for a sec. Sorry about that. Okay, those are the red lines that I was anticipating. Trustees, give you a few seconds to look at it. And then if you would like to offer any further changes before I ask for a motion, I would appreciate that.
Oh, we might want to do two, maybe swap Arnie out for Brandon Rubin, just because of.
Oh, do we have badly keen issues?
Yeah, just to preserve sort of the flexibility or the nimbleness of the process.
I'm fine with that.
Thanks, Brendan.
Melanie, I want to make sure this addresses your comment about prioritization. Does the delegation here to the board chair and the chair of the finance committee satisfy that comment, right, that ultimately, there may be a need to prioritize? Or did you want the board to do that today?
Well, I don't think we I know that the legislative liaisons get an opportunity to be a part of the conversation. And so I would probably offer it up to the legislative liaisons in consultation with the board to help with prioritization. I'm comfortable. I don't want us, our language to be so regimented that it doesn't allow for the process of negotiation and conversation and agility. And so I'm comfortable with things the way that they stand here. I thought about adding legislative liaisons to legislative stakeholders, but I think legislative stakeholders involves and includes legislative liaison. So that would be my interpretation.
Okay.
All right.
I agree. I move this as I make a motion to approve the resolution resolutions as proffered by our staff.
Thank you, Greg. Is the motion by Noel? Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Shelby. Thank you. There's no further debate or discussion. Madam Secretary, may we have the roll?
Broughton?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Good, not present? No.
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sewell?
I'm an aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Ken Eyes, zero nays, motion carry.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item 702, which was to be an emergency amendment to Rule 2605 related to vexatious complainants has been withdrawn. That request does not need to be considered by the board. So there being no further business, I will adjourn again with my thanks to all of you for participation, especially you, Mr. Tony. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Take care.